Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin. I'm chairman of the planning board. I'm calling the meeting of July 10, 2023, to order at 6:31 PM. As a roll call vote, please.
Robert Therian here.
Carol Hobson's present.
Andrew Shepherd here.
Mike Roscoe, associate member here.
Thanks, Mike. And Laura Schifrin here. Would you all join me with the political allegiance? As political allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as strong. Let's thank all of our veterans, as well as all of our current military and all of our first responders. We wouldn't be able to do anything without all of you, honestly. 1.3. I cannot hear any deletions. Just apologies. I don't have any additions.
It would be under a discussion, 1.5, a discussion to set up a site visit for an application.
Okay, I'll ask you to do that. Site visit, okay. And is Tony on? We have 1.4. There's a dead twice. That's going to be 1.6. Is anyone else online? That's one thing I can't, because that's far away. I can't tell if anybody else is. Any other participants online besides Michael?
Looks like Michael is the only one.
This is Sam Ingram from Meridian is here online.
Yes, thank you. And anyone else?
Laurie, there's a 508 number on as well, too.
Was that?
Michael, you're on 508, Mike?
No, that's not.
I have my name up there.
Apologies. That is myself, Jonathan Voss, from March Regional Planning Commission. I have to call in tonight. So I will be here on the phone trying to hear you.
Okay. Can you hear us okay?
Uh, yep.
Okay. We'll get to you soon. Okay, so Tony is not on. And we were just going to meet him. Oh, can I just? I'm all, if it pleases the board, I will skip 1.4. And if he comes in before we have to adjourn, then I'll go to him, okay? 1.5 now will be approval of the minutes of June 12, 2023. They have been given to us. Anybody who'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 12?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 12.
And do I have a second for discussion?
Sorry, second.
Okay. Can anybody see any changes, additions or deletions that should be done? No, nearing none. I'll take a roll call vote to approve the minutes of June 12, 2023.
Robert Therian, yes.
Carol Hobson, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much. And again, 1.6, and that is to book a site visit for...
The board received an application for a major strictly development. It's site planning due. And the public hearing is scheduled for July 24. And I thought it would be a good idea for the board to take a site visit out there.
Good try.
Is that what?
I was wondering if July 18 at 5:00 PM works?
Oh, good. 7:18, 5 o'clock.
Yeah, that works. That's at 9.6. 9.6. Okay, everybody good with that?
I think so. July 18.
Yeah, well, no, this is 17. Okay, so it's a week from Tuesday.
Very good, thank you. I don't know, what can I do quick? So I do have on my agenda 6:45 A&R. No, I think we could do that. The engineer is on. Sure. And they're here. So let's go to 2.2 on our agenda, the A&R application for 169 Main Street. The engineer is on. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, of course. My name is Sam Ingram from Meridian Land Services. I'm here on behalf of David and Beverly. This application is for an A&R depicting lots 1 and 2 on the plan. Both lots have the adequate frontage along Main Streets, 200 feet and 200.05 feet for lots 1 and 2. Both lots are fairly large in size, being over 5 acres, actually. So it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if I need to go into a whole lot more detail unless there's questions from the board. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Hey Laurie, do we have a copy of the share screen for the A&R? I just haven't, I just didn't see it. Do you guys have it in front of you there?
Would anyone like to share the screen?
Can you, Beth, okay.
Okay. Hold on one second. Would that be Townsend Administration for you, Beth?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, hold on.
Thanks, guys. I just don't have access to the Google or shared drives to this computer, unfortunately. They're blocked.
I forgot to do something. So, and it's my privilege to do this. For this meeting, I would, we don't have a five-member board right now. We only have four. Mike is our alternate and our associate member. And he can vote at this meeting in that vacancy. And so I am appointing Michael Roscoe to be able to vote this evening as our associate member.
That's really powerful.
Okay. Okay. Can you see that, Michael?
You.
What?
We just, right now, it will be that. But when you see the finished product, it won't be.
Pardon?
Yes, I can see it.
It's far away, but it won't be the finished product.
I got you. So anyway, I see it clearly. Michael? Michael, can you see it?
Yeah, I can see it clearly. Thanks so much, Beth.
You're welcome. Before you leave, I'll just have you sign it. Maybe you can look in. I have to go in this mess. Who said remember? No questions?
I don't have any questions. It looks like the required frontage is there.
Right.
It's not more complicated than that.
No, it's... Carol?
No, I'm good.
Robert?
It worked.
Okay. I think it worked. So even though it's A&R, we still take a vote, right?
You vote to endorse it.
Yeah, okay. I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan for... 169 Main Street, A&R.
I assume.
Okay, so a second? Nearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, the endorsement of the A&R at 169 Main Street.
Robert Therian, yes.
Carol Hobson, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Mike Roscoe, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Congratulations. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
We need more housing.
Thank you, board. Have a good night.
If you guys want to sign this. Yeah, you can sign. They can take it.
You can sign it. You can sign in. And then they can take this with them.
Well, if you sign them, I already have it.
Because that's the only one I signed.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Why is there not a section for that? It's not in the A&R plot. It's very...
Why?
Oh, I didn't see that until then. You can date it. I thought it was there.
Thanks, Sam.
He's enjoying dinner, I'm sure.
Let's go.
Good, that's good.
Nothing's easy.
Yeah, don't roll it for a little bit just because it...
Oh, because of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to take it out and then watch the radio.
Four out of five.
Do you guys need the maps for here?
The other copies, yes. Thank you. Those go to the different departments, so.
Oh, I'll just carry them.
Yes. There you go. Just hold it for the chart back. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Do you have Chad's email? Because my stuff gets sent back. Get Chad's email so you can send.
I've already done it.
Okay, yeah. Everything I send out gets rejected. Some kind of new Gmail thing.
Yeah, each one of those copies.
Yeah, whatever you want to receive this information. And your affordable housing. So, yeah, that's what we're trying to...
So I'm thinking again.
I love to send you the details.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so you can actually, I forgot to scratch that with the A&R reason, but we can basically just scratch that. That meeting is not happening.
So that to begin with. Just for edification, 2.4 is being removed from tonight's agenda.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
What is 2.4?
2.4.
What's the 2.4?
Yeah.
We're just...
And... Tony still is not here.
Yeah. At this point, and I don't know where he is.
Did you already approve his name to move forward?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to wait. Do you have a number that you can...
I have an email.
Okay.
But he's on vacation, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Just some questions. I'll do a comment requested from the planning board. If you can, you can take that.
Carol?
Oh, yes. 2.3 from the, actually, from the planning board, the conservation commission and the board of sword, and I need a review letter saying that you can do the open space recreation plan. And if you don't have any comments, I can do that comment. I'll open that up to the board.
Just started the draft.
Oh.
Yeah. I use this for... So that was used. It's working. But whatever is your preference.
I don't think there's a... The review letters, those three review letters. We can't put the plan. I guess it's probably a purple.
The open space plan?
Yeah. They got the review letters from the three boards.
I have a letter for you guys. You can fill in the blank here. There you go. Yeah, the board request us to review the plan upon release. And it was released on June 22nd.
I think that was the forum?
Yeah. Which was beginning at a comment period.
Well, the comment period started before the forum. It was a week before and a week after.
So similar to the housing production plan process, the board needs, you're requesting a letter from the planning board commenting on that plan, on the draft, open space recreation plan. I started a letter for you guys.
Yeah, I saw the draft. I saw the draft. Thank you.
Yeah, we fill in the blank. Add more here.
What does it say?
This notice to inform the recreation committee that the planning board is in support of the 2023 open space recreation plan. Serious. That's all me. You guys can...
Oh, and I don't know if I responded back to what your comment from that, from the goal from that, whatever it was.
Oh, yes, yes. The trail.
The trail.
The conflict.
Yes. The trail, the trail thing, yes.
I did talk to... Yeah, there's sort of a program I found out about. It's an educational program on how to avoid... It's safety oriented and how to avoid conflicts on the trail between bikers, horseback riders. You know, folks that are elderly and less, you know, less noble.
I said to Justin, he's letting know that it was covered, that it was covered.
Good, yeah.
He said, yeah.
I've only had one. I've been, well, not the last couple of weeks, but I've been on the trail a lot. And there was really only one day where a swoosh of some young kids, which I liked seeing there, but there was like three kids on bikes. And they, I thought they were going to spin me right around. Other than that, everybody is...
Very courteous.
Yeah, very courteous. Not everybody has their poop bag with them. So, you know, and it's supposed to be for everybody, not just for the dogs. So I don't know that everything is... I love the road trip.
Yeah. I think that, you know, I agree. Jeffrey, who did the plan, said it would be included in the implementation phase. You know, we could create a trail safety committee or something like that. It implemented. It was implemented out West, actually, at first. And it's just strictly a positive educational program. Now we have electric bikes and... I see how horses and electric bikes connect.
I haven't seen a horse there yet.
Yeah, I mean, they are allowed, but I, you know, I don't even...
Do you know anybody in town that's familiar with ADA rules?
I am.
You are? Oh, okay.
Well, there's a big difference here. ADA is a federal law. It's a civil rights law. It's very broad. And they don't give you requirements. They give you guidelines. And it's meant to have... Well, for example, it's already under 700 legal disabilities. And they include mental illnesses, claustromania, and things that physically do not, you can't apply to a structure per se.
Right.
So in lieu of that, the International Building Code, which is now adopted by the state of Massachusetts with various amendments to them, the only stuff that really applies primarily is focused on wheelchair impaired people with a few other requirements for people that may be blind. So that is the Architectural Access Board, the Architectural Access Code, which is a part of the Commonwealth Building Code. So when people mention ADA, it's only because they've heard that.
Catch all.
All right, so... So the federal law doesn't make it. It says it's a law. And if you can't comply, it also says that you have to make an accommodation.
Yeah. It's involved accommodation, right?
Right.
So I didn't get a chance to review the open space plan?
I didn't either.
So I'm a little apprehensive just to say hi.
What is it due by?
Google it.
Well, we already passed the contract. I'm thinking, I think the contract's over, but he said he would still kind of help us, even though I...
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to defer it to the 24th, that's fine. You get a chance to review it. Why don't we just...
I just pulled it up. I mean, it looks nice. I'm seven in out of 100.
Yeah, it's one thing. It's not shot. It's...
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Want to get back?
Actually, if you could look at it for me.
Yes.
And for the, just for ADA, if there's anything in there that we missed.
I can tell you pretty much what the requirements would be. All right? In terms of...
It must just be one section?
Yes.
That would have it.
There probably would be requirements for lamps and rails, surface materials, parking designation in close proximity.
Okay. So would that just be for the rail trail? No, that's not just for the...
No, this plan is for all open space recreation. I mean, we're looking at some of our goals are to create a recreation center. Veronica would like to see a swimming pool house behind the senior center.
She'll get a lift in that pool.
Yeah, it's also looking at, you know, bike trails, sports facilities.
I'd be glad to give her a review on anything that you want to show.
I can, no. Yeah, let me, I'll look at it tomorrow. I can just email you and discuss just kind of point out sections, maybe. Because, I mean, I know it's a long document.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get it approved so I can be done a little bit.
Okay, so we're gonna, we will defer for our vote and our letter to July 24.
And it's just up and down, support or not support? That's all we're doing?
Yeah.
No, you can add, you know, you can add comments.
Comments can be made in the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you want, you can take them out.
Put it in the letter if you want. And then you can vote on it next meeting. Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think you know what I'm saying.
Any comments if you want to share before the meeting? Go, have them go to Beth. And she can share them in the portal.
Sure.
Right? Okay.
I'll put them right in the draft. And you guys can vote.
Yeah, that would be awesome, right? So you can do the ADA part of it.
Right. One of the things that is often overlooked, though, is on the railings, when I put railings and stuff, it's a big demand to do pressure treated materials. Not good.
Contrary.
Very poisonous.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah, it's winters.
Yeah.
It's full of... Thank you. Winters you get from...
Really? Okay. So that's deferred. Jonathan? Somebody else is on. Jessica?
Meridian might be.
Here for the, probably MBTA community's compliance.
Yeah, so that's what I should do now, right? Yeah. Okay, so 2.1. Yeah, do you want to...
Jonathan Voss is with us. Alvin Margaret Scarsdale.
Okay.
That's great. So great timing. Jonathan from MRPC is here with us tonight.
Right. Give us an update on the MBTA. And Margaret Scarsdale has joined us, MBTA communities compliance project. Okay, Jonathan, you want to take it away?
Alrighty. So MRPC has been meeting with Townsend municipal staff to do preliminary exploratory workshops to evaluate potential areas for MBTA district overlay zones to be put for the sake of modeling purposes. So this, we had the second workshop on June 26, so just a short two weeks ago. And we are still at five parcels at this point, but they have changed. And I will just do a brief overview of those changes. I believe you have the updated map. But the previous District 1, District 4 on the east side of Wallace Hill and Proctor Road respectively, were eliminated after thorough consideration due to the idea of we want to create a district or the idea is to create the most readily viable overlay district for when an MBTA district is created, not just something that's going to sit and languish for, I don't know, that many years. And there were some concerns brought to light with topographical constraints with the degree of the slope on a number of those properties that constituted all the parcels in the original District 1 and District 4. After some additional conversation and reviewing, we decided to explore an expanded version of District 2 and District 5. District 2 being 178 and 180 Wallace Hill Road and District 5 being 1 through 5 and 4 through 15 Main Street, also the Hanaford redevelopment mixed use zone, as it were. So District 2, we experimented with to have an expanded residential multifamily zone brought down from 96 to 150 Wallace Hill Road. And that gives us, just to go over some of the numbers, that parcel is 43 acres. Our 40, and the partial acreage, 44 of it. And then the multifamily unit capacity of that without any additional size constraints as of now is just under 1,800 units or 41 units per acre, nearly three times the density requirement. And then the second additional parcel is the Main Street. And that is an expanded mixed use multifamily idea, just kind of extending that further up Main Street towards the center of Townsend a little bit. And that is 20 through 36 Main Street. It's about 12 acres. And there's just shy 500 multifamily unit capacities, also at 41 units per acre. So also nearly three times the density.
So if we had any other thoughts, those are in the, those are both in the feasible but sensitive areas? Being yellow?
These are all within kind of the sweet spot of they don't, they don't cross over any non-developable area insomuch. And they don't overlay to any significant degree on the feasible but sensitive lands or the extended parts or the extended parcels on Wallace Hill Road don't. on Wallace Hill Road don't. All of the parcels on Main Street do, uh, but it's already, uh, in, in most cases, that's land that's already been, uh, at least partially commercially developed.
What about, if I may ask a question? On Main Street, oh, it looks like it's on Main Street, right?
This is Main Street, right?
Correct. So, this is Main Street, right? So, um-
What size?
On the other side, yeah, um, it's hard to tell where what is on here. Um, I mean, you, we can tell Proctor Road and we can tell Main Street, but-
And I know Wallace Hill Road.
We don't, we don't know where the, um, like, where's the high school? For instance.
Hey Lori, the high school is right across from District 5.
Yeah.
You see that little, yeah, right where his mouse is? That's, that's the high school.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Gotcha.
Yep.
So then, what's this, is that Edward? No, that's Spalding. Spalding right there. So, what, what I'm looking at, and I, and I don't even know, okay, except that we have a couple of white spots, meaning not sensitive at all. Can, on Main Street? No, it can't, it can't be.
We don't have one, so it's just for state.
Well, no, we, well, we do. Um, that's- Have some boundaries.
What, what do the colors mean again? I'm sorry. I was breaking up on my end. The yellow is the feasible areas?
Yeah, feasible but sensitive lands. And then pink is non-feasible, which is good part of the town, most of the town.
Yeah, it is.
So, and then, so the top one that is white, like a blue on it?
That's the-
Mm-hmm.
It's the districts.
Oh, that's those. Okay, but that's already marked out.
Yeah.
So, you notice how on Main Street, you go a little west of your dis- district markers and past the pink, and there's like two, two or three really white spots there? Now, I don't, I don't know, I'm just wondering if they can be incorporated. I mean, I don't know who owns them. We'd have to look at who owns them and how big they are. Um-
How many, um, in District 4 and 5, how many acres are involved there?
Uh, District 4 and 5?
Yes.
Um, you are looking at, uh, 12 acres for District 4 and 15 acres for, uh, District 5.
So-
29.
Excuse me, just to double check, we are talking about the two Main Street districts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yep, uh, 11.9 acres and then 15.2 acres respectively.
Opposite, opposite District 4 and 5, that area that's pink, is that the high school property?
Uh, yes, that is, that is the high school and also a non-feasible land.
The what?
And not feasible land.
Oh.
A high school and-
Yeah, it goes, it actually goes back into like that little swamp that's behind the baseball field and the soccer field.
Alright.
It's too big for the high school area.
I just question-
District 4, all those, all those plots are, are developed.
Yeah, uh, so in the case of District, uh, 4 and 5 are the Main Street districts, um, it's more so, uh, using the MBTA overlay zone as in, in this case, a redevelopment tool to allow for, uh, mixed-use multifamily instead of, uh, purely, uh, residential multifamily as we were, uh, looking at in, uh, Districts 2 and, uh, 1 and 2.
Could I ask one, uh, conducting and providing this information for us? Um, there is no prerequisite regarding who currently owns the property now, is there?
Well, it can't be told, just tell. It can't be told.
The only prerequisites are, is that it can't be owned by a government entity, pretty much. Uh, so, it can't be owned by the state, it can't be owned by the town.
No, so the current property owners there can stay just the way they are, or they have the opportunity to own their property. Right?
That is, that is absolutely correct.
And we're still trying- Go ahead.
There's no forcing anyone to develop if they don't want to. Uh, it's just allowing the tools to do so in the future.
Okay.
So, we're still trying to find places that we could add so that possibly something could be done. I mean, about two years ago now, maybe it's three, we lost 30 housing units in the town, in, in one day. And they're not rebuilt, and they were all rental units. So, we really need a place for somebody to put, maybe not 30, but certainly start adding some rental units.
Right.
And Main Street would be-
Right.
Lori, did you ask the white spots between the harbor and the center?
Yeah, like, like right here.
So I know, just by looking at it, one of those is the one we just approved, the A and R. The, uh, right where you see on Main Street in the middle of the T, that little flanked one, I'm pretty sure the map that we approved is the same size, and it's next to Green River Road, which is where.
I can't, you know what, I can't see.
I was just about to say that, Andrew. That's the only area I thought, I thought it was the A and R too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I think across the street is the former Chambers.
The former what?
Where the, we called the Chambers A Field.
Oh.
It's just a field that we had. Uh, it's now owned by Trevor Stanton, I believe.
Okay.
Not the throw one.
That's correct, 'cause that's, that's who's on the, um, on the A and R.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the reason why.
Right.
Water.
Or, right. Well, they're gonna have sewer anyway, but, you know.
This, this has sewer, right?
Not public sewer.
No.
This, this is all private. We, there's no public sewer in Townsend.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
No way.
Anywhere. And likely now won't be.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess can we look at, um, some of the feasible, or some more of the feasible, but sensitive lands, which are new, but along, along Main Street?
Hey Lori, I just have a question. I'm sorry. I see this purple outline over in the center. Is that like, are these historical districts? What are those?
Yes, those are the historical districts. So, all three of them are outlined, uh, on the map.
Awesome. Yeah, I saw it on the harbor too. I just wanted to make sure. It looked right, but I wasn't sure. They wanna make an assumption.
I'm very comfortable with all this. And, and these are okay as well. Concerns only go through the line here.
So, this, like, you have some areas, oh no, this is District 3.
Right.
Okay.
So, we have District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, which is, seems to be ample.
Can you add? Can you, uh, what made you draw the blue line for District 3 the way you did?
Oh, um, District 3 is drawn that way because, uh, the constraints of the zones are, the smallest you can possibly go is, uh, by parcel size, and you have to include the entire parcel. Uh, so those are actually the borders of, of just one parcel. Um, but the entire area was included as a potential, uh, site.
So, District 3 is just one parcel?
Yes, it's 126 acres.
Wow.
Well, so I used to-
What does that, uh, who does-
So I, this is probably a, a good point to, I do feel, I don't know how to approach this contact and interest wise, but that's like family land for us, and we hate, um, like 100 acres or so. So I would feel apt to abstain from voting on-
Okay, so I guess, I guess that's-
On my own.
Alright, so that's, is there a way? Is that, I think that's the time zone I'm talking about. Oh, yeah. Is there a way of bringing that blue line forward? And, well, if you know the property, where that barn is that needs to be taken down? Behind what was Colin's house?
So Colin's house is a fully yellow parcel right next to like the flank that goes closest to Main Street.
Okay.
I don't know if that's descriptive enough.
I'm not sure.
Um, if you zoom in, you can, can anybody see?
You wanna drive?
Can you, can your mouse?
You know, it's a lane here.
So, this here is Harbor, uh, Harbor Road, I think? And then this is what we call the Harbor Farm. This here is Colin's old property, which has a barn on it that is, you know.
How many acres are on the barn?
That property itself? I think it's like 16 or 20, or something, that-
Okay, so, I mean, this is something-
Where the mouse is.
We have a lot of things here that have, that make up all the land that will end up meaning nothing, because likely nothing will happen. But if we can expand that parcel, and the owner is willing, you may end up with some housing there. Like, if the barn comes down and you do six or eight apartments, or 10 apartments, that's still not wholly lost.
Alright, so what, services available, water?
Well, it's close enough to water.
Hey Lori, two questions for you. So, uh- So you go for it, you go for it, and then I'll ask my question.
Uh, I just wanna, uh, just, um, all of these, uh, districts, uh, shouldn't have any issues supplying water. Uh, the water department was involved in, uh, examining and going over everything, so, uh, these are definitely all viable in terms of connecting, um, services like that without, uh, any, any major problems.
So, but what I'm saying is, you'd have to expand the blue line for District 3 to incorporate that other property, uh, that basically is on Main Street. So you'd go from the abutting line to Main Street and extend that district?
Yes.
Being within the district and can, okay, because then there, there may be a possibility.
What's, what's your point in doing that?
Because then if the owner decides to take down the barn and put in six or eight units, you've got some housing with, that will feed into the project that MBTA is trying to do. Huh?
Yeah.
Lori, a question for you. So I, I, I know the overall goal of this is to really stay MBTA compliant with the new MBTA, MBTA Jason laws. So creating these districts, is that what we're looking to do? I understand what you're saying where, you know, we could try to, you know, the, the landowners may or may not be doing anything at this time, and we're not gonna get anything from it. But the overall, I'd love to see something happen, but I think the overall is to make sure that we're compliant, so we don't lose out on grant money or things like that. Is that what these districts would be doing? Keeping us compliant?
Yes, so all of these districts could be made compliant, um, very easy. They already meet, um, uh, compliance requirements in the model itself, um, which is why they're being, uh, more heavily looked at. Um, so there are less steps that would need to be taken in order to, uh, make, uh, any of these, uh, potential district sites we've seen, um, viable, because, uh, they already are in terms of density allowance, uh, feasible area, um, anything like that.
Okay.
So are you, are you, are you opposed to expanding this district? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I think, I, I, so you can't see it, but where his mouse just was, if that's, I think that's the parcel you guys are talking about. I think that'd be great. I believe that's behind 82 Main Street. I think Andrew, Andrew would know better than me. And I think I know the barn you're talking up there too, so, um-
I don't know, but we can just find out. That, that per parcel that's right, it looks like a little alcove. So you take that alcove and bring it to Main Street as part of the district.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep. That can be, that can be done pretty easily.
Yeah. Well, right here, you bring it to Main Street. It may not all be usable, but you bring that district to Main Street, and then it falls within what would be considered compliant area. And should something happen there, it would count.
85 Main Street.
85 Main Street?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I, I think it's doable when you're thinking the reality there. That's a residence or road that goes down here right now, right? What's that, much the same?
It's a long driveway. It's-
It's a bunch of same, you know?
Yes, isn't that a shared driveway on that floor?
It's what?
Yeah, is, is it a shared driveway back to the-
Shared driveway or private road?
Um, I think it's a shared driveway. I mean, there's no, it should be a one-family farmhouse. So there was never, you know, the farm road.
Yeah. There's not, there's not, there's nothing there.
On 85 Main Street, yeah.
There's nothing there. A, a barn is falling down. It's got to come down. It must be something useful.
It's already fallen in on itself, part of it.
Yeah, so, um, yeah. Everybody agreed that we asked them to add that?
I would understand.
I had a good view.
Not you.
Three, I understand.
Oh, alright.
Cause that's related.
Okay. Any comments? Happy?
Yeah, me too. I asked at the last meeting about that. If you wanna ask, Jonathan. I'm reading the ask for, oh, you wanna ask me?
So in, in our last meeting, it's time of our minutes, board members want to consider the requirement of 20% affordability for Townsend for units in its MBTA communities, multifamily overlay districts. Jonathan, you've done a little research on that. Could you update the board, please? On MRPC?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, uh, there is the, I mean, we've gone over it before, but there's a 10% threshold, and, uh, going over that, up to a 20% affordability requirement, there is the proof of, or the economic feasibility assessment that needs to be done. Um, and it's, uh, pretty much a checklist and evaluation of the, um, different viable, um, impacts in the community. Uh, to make sure that there's, uh, actually the potential for them to be, uh, fulfilled. Uh, so you're not just putting a burden on the developer by, you know, giving them an impossible, uh, uh, proportion of affordable units that need to be, uh, built. Uh, I believe the materials have been provided. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep, they're in the folders.
Alright, perfect. Um, I, I can run through them with you really quick right now?
Um, we can do that next time. Yeah, we're, we, we have some other pressing business to do, but we appreciate the date, and we would appreciate it if you add that additional parcel, and maybe next time-
Yeah, absolutely.
do a lot more. Um, and then...
Not support, I'm not sure I support that personally.
What?
This extension here to the Main Street. Only because...
Something might happen from it?
Yeah. Well, I, I, I just, can I just take a moment here and talk about what?
Um, Adam is here, and we have something that we need to do, and this is an ongoing discussion.
Okay.
So we can continue this at the, at the next meeting.
We're just exploring where we can go, right?
We are exploring where we can go.
All right, that's fine.
And Timmy asked a question. The ten percent threshold for affordable units is, again, not putting the burden on the developer, but would, if the developer agreed, would they be able to do more than ten percent?
Yeah.
Uh, that's what the, um, that's what the, um, economic feasibility assessment is for, so if that's done, you can create the district requiring up to twenty percent of the, of any units that are built to be affordable units.
Okay.
So it gets, it gets ahead of any developing that would be done, it would already be required in the bylaws of the overlay district itself.
I guess, um, I want to feel more confident about this overlay district approach. So, there's so many different housing demands and types and programs. We were hoping we could have a solution to accommodate all of them, um, and not just have it one statute focused. Um, and when you think of those, and you think of the requirements from the various, like your elderly housing, and you have, uh, uh, housing for the aging, and you have affordable housing, and you have low-income housing, every one of these programs have a, their own guidelines and parameters and criteria. Um, so, my thinking, and I, I mean, I don't know how to address all of that, but other than to say, if we have these districts that we're looking at today, which are specifically for the MBTA requirements, um, I would like to expand those districts if we need to, to address all those different programs that we're being asked to do. Uh, and is that, I mean...
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit.
I, I need confidence that that's, is workable and that can be done.
No, it, it absolutely can, so, uh, these MBTA community districts, um, can be, can be pretty much reused and, uh, tweaked, uh, to create new, um, similar districts after the fact, that would be, that would pretty much, uh, stand on their own, as long as these, um, original, or the, i- if, if it's just one, original district, uh, remains as is, uh, to remain compliant with the MBTA, uh, requirement, there's nothing preventing, um, Townsend from later on taking that, um, overlay bylaw and, uh, re, uh, reusing it for, uh, possibly slightly different reiteration, uh, anywhere in the community that, uh, would, that, that seems to, would seem to benefit from it.
Okay, all right. Um, so you'll be at our meeting on the twenty-fourth, Jonathan?
Uh, absolutely, and, uh, if there are any, uh, questions on these lines that, um, might benefit from a more in-depth approach, do, absolutely, feel free to send them to me beforehand, and I will do my best to make sure I have the most comprehensive answers for you possible.
Okay, so, and I'm not taking a, um, and I know, Andrew, you can't vote, so I'm not taking, like, a, a motion and a vote right now, but I'd like, um, an opinion from Carol and Michael, um, of, just quickly, are you in agreement or not in agreement with extending that district that we talked about on Main Street, district? Um, three.
So, just before we do that?
But you, but you spoke.
Yeah.
You spoke, we know your opinion.
No, I just wanted to know how many acres involved.
Oh, Jonathan? Um, oh, I don't know if we, we're gonna know that right now, but Jonathan?
I mean, currently, as this is presented now, what do we have already?
For the three districts, the total acreage?
The five.
Or five, excuse me, and then five.
Uh, for all the districts together?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so let me do some quick math. Uh, so for the current districts, all of them together, uh, is two hundred and seven point six acres.
Two hundred...
And seven.
Yeah, most of them...
That's a resident.
Yeah.
So even what we have now should be more than adequate.
Yeah, but I, it doesn't mean anything. I have a real problem with something that doesn't mean anything.
What do you mean it doesn't mean anything?
So, so Lori, let me sit, let me step in for a second, so...
You're doing it for housing.
Yeah, Lori, go, go get that, uh, to answer your question, I'm for extending the district. Um, I, I would tend to agree with you, I don't wanna just district to district and say that we're in compliance, that's kind of why I brought that up earlier, is asking, does this do the compliance? This might actually lead to something. So to answer your question, yes, I am in for it, and just so you know, you do have someone with their hand up as well, um, in the, uh, in, um, sorry, I can't talk right now.
In the peanut gallery.
No worries.
Okay, I, I'm really sorry, but I'm, we, we do have to, um, adjourn this and go into a pressing matter that, so we'll be adjourning, um, yeah, for meeting, I'm not, I'm not gonna go to three. Everything will just have to be, unless there's something pressing that we have to do. Okay, so it's, um, gonna entertain a motion to adjourn at seven-thirty.
Hold me to motion to adjourn at seven-thirty.
And we'll be going into a second executive session, and we will not be returning from executive.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Karen Hoxsey, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Michael?
Mike Marusko, yes.
Laura Schipren, yes. We are adjourned.